Yeah, actually.
You've never plugged.
Yeah, I.
All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this Livingston City Commission meeting to order at five thirty one P M on August twentieth. We'll call please.
Chair Cal.
Here.
Vice Chair Nuts.
Here.
Mister Schwartz.
Present.
Mister Willich.
Here.
And Commissioner Lyons is out. You have a corner.
Thank you. Uh, so good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with general public comment. So I'll remind folks that this is public comment for items that's not on the agenda or any item that is in the consent items list this evening. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items or which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction, or advisory power. Also remind folks that we do limit a public comment to four minutes. And so let's go ahead and get started with the general public comment, and we'll start with folks in the room. So I'd invite you to come up to the podium. Give us your name and address, and we can go from there. Anyone? General public comment?
Hi there. I'm Erica Lightheiser. At five twenty eight South Eighth Street. Good evening. My name's Erica Lightheiser, and we live at the end of Eighth Street, where on August twelfth, the city conducted a chip seal project that was followed by a heavy rainstorm. Sorry, husband, you can't talk to me now. This resulted in a liquid asphalt emulsion of petrochemicals and emulsifiers that poured down into Flushman Creek and Lagoon, and potentially the Yellowstone River. First, I do want to express my gratitude for this to the city for promptly acknowledging the potential damage and also taking decisive action by contacting D E Q and taking steps to isolate the chemical. It was reassuring to see the city working swiftly to clean up the contamination in Sacagawea Lagoon and reviewing protocols to prevent this from happening again. I do think this event and incident should serve as a wake up call, however. As the first incorporated community in the headwaters of the Yellowstone River, we bear significant responsibility to protect our waterways, and the petrochemical pollution from its chip sealing project is a stark reminder that we urgently need to a comprehensive stormwater management system. Probably not someday in the future when we reach ten thousand people, but maybe as soon as possible. During this event, the B Street crossing was also flooded, and so if a train had come through town at that point, the north side residents would have been trapped. So this is a critical health and safety issue you all I know are aware of. And we just, I just want to say here today is my in my role at Per County Environmental Council. We're willing to partners, we're ready to assist, write grants, do whatever is necessary to move for the stormwater comprehensive system with a changing climate and unpredictable and intense rainstorms were are gonna happen. It's gonna be more common, so we should be prepared for these events, and there should be potentially a policy change that future chip seal projects. You know, there may be if it's a five percent chance of rain or above, we're not doing it today. We really need to figure out a way for that not to happen again. I think it would be also good to do some regular water quality testing, potentially in Flushman Creek in the lagoon or places where stormwater just charges into the Yellowstone River. You know, it's my understanding that there wasn't a baseline to compare that information to just so I'd like to see that be incorporated. So we so we know what we're looking at, and then potentially we can it would be wonderful if the lagoon was safe to swim in someday. And that we can protect our waterways and non drinking water. And finally, I just want to currently address the situation on Eighth Street. I have images and videos of the incident if you're interested. And there's still quite a bit of petrochemical sludge that's going down into the creek. My understanding is there is gonna be some excavation or some work to try to mitigate that, but the soil looks to be contaminated. There's still probably petrochemical in the waterway. So any information that you can all share as to the steps of that cleanup process would be greatly appreciated. Thanks for my.
Thanks, Erica. Any other public comment? For items on the agenda? Anyone online to make public comment? For items not on the agenda or consent items? We will go ahead and close with a comment.
It's like a point of order. I just wanna thank Erica for her comment, but also acknowledge that quite a few things on the list are actually not the commission's jurisdiction or within our authority. So I think like water testing, if there was a big policy that the commission had potentially, it would be otherwise, I think it's administrative and like the street chip selling policy is administrative. Emergency management like the B Street crossing and other crossings also administrative. And then acknowledge that we are, we have been talking about the stormwater plan, and that's been in the works for gosh, when did we start talking about it?
Six years ago.
Six years. I was gonna say at least five, so six years.
I mean, it's like downtown, we've
It's already been starting.
Already been, you know, taken care of there, you know, do.
Right. But that'll be.
But yeah.
But that with the way the city was designed originally, like the stormwater is particularly a lot of it is like surface water is the way that it moves through town. So it's gonna be a major undertaking and not something that we can just fix right away. But I just wanted to acknowledge that like the majority of what was stated is actually not our authority.
All right. Uh, we have a move on down the agenda. Uh, consent items. Mr. Is anyone like anything?
I'm good with it.
Do I have a motion?
We'll make a motion to put approved consent items A, B, C, and D.
I have a motion by Schwartz for a second. It was a second by what? Sorry. Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
I.
I. Motion carries. Now, now we have one proclamation.
It's stand while you.
Yes.
You're required to.
Oh, yeah, maybe you do need to.
I didn't mean to sing you the outside.
I'm sure you know, I'm starting, it's hard to admit, but.
Do you wanna lay down?
Yeah.
All right, so let's continue on. Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission recognizing National Senior Citizen Day in Livingston, Montana, August twenty first, twenty twenty four. Whereas the senior citizens of Livingston, Montana have dedicated their lives to the growth and prosperity of our community, contributing wisdom, strength, and a memorable experience to the fabric of our society. And whereas National Senior Citizen Day observed on August twenty first, twenty twenty four is a is a time to recognize and honor achievements, sacrifices, and contributions of our senior citizens, acknowledging the vital role that they could continue to play in our families, workplaces, and community. And whereas our senior citizens has faced many challenges throughout their lives, yet have shown resilience, adaptability, and kindness, serving as role models for younger generations. And whereas the city of Livingston is committed to ensuring that our senior citizens receive the respect, care, and the support they deserve, including access to services and programs that enhance their quality of life, health, and well being. And whereas it is fitting that we come together as a community to celebrate our seniors, express our gratitude, and reaffirm our commitments, making Livingston a place where seniors are valued and cherished, and now therefore be it resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I care, I carry Kale Chair, do hear our proclaim August twenty first, twenty twenty four as National Senior Citizen Day in Livingston, Montana. And further, I urge all residents to honor and celebrate our senior citizens for their lasting contribution to engage in activities that support their well being and strengthen connections across generations. Mister Gager. You come?
I look forward to celebrating the senior citizens tomorrow, and it's actually my brother's birthday tomorrow, but he won't be a senior citizen yet. But I'll remember that for a few years.
Anyone else?
No. All your grandparents, if they're still around.
Or your parents if they're.
Or your parents. Yeah, I got some to qualify.
Okay. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to our action items. The first resolution number fifty one forty, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, fixing the tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is to formally fix the tax levy that underlies the budget which you folks approved earlier this summer. And so this is the just about the last formal step that we have to take in order to move forward this fiscal year. And so as discussed in the staff report, and I will share momentarily with folks, there is a slight increase in the effective tax that folks will will witness this year. And as shown on the screen for a parcel with a value of three hundred thousand, that increases is approximately thirty four dollars for the coming year. And so Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions that the commission may.
Commissioners, any questions? No?
No.
All right. Um. If that's the case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five one four zero.
One motion by Schwartz, throw in a second. Well, second. Second by news. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Let's start in the room. Anyone in the room like to make public comment? All right. Seeing no one in the room. We'll go online. Would anyone online like to make public comments? Feel free to raise your hands, or you can even just come off mute and give us your name and address, please. I'll ask one more time. Public comments online or in the room? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, deliberation? Discussion?
A.
We saw this.
Notice that. Pro forma thing. Something we do annually.
All right. Well. Mister Nuts, anything? Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Cal.
For.
Vice Chair Nuts.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Mister Willich.
For.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to our next action item. Action item B. Resolution number fifty one forty one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to specify the assessment option for the Street Maintenance Improvement District number one for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and an estimate amount of one million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Levy and assess all property within the district. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the final resolution to specify the street maintenance budget as was previously presented this summer to you folks and approved. And as noted in the staff report, for fiscal year twenty twenty five, we expect the average residential assessment to be approximately two hundred and sixty eight dollars and sixty cents, while the average commercial assessment will be approximately six hundred and forty six dollars and ninety five cents. And as shown on the screen, there is a slight increase, and so a a house with the assessed value of three hundred thousand would see an increase of approximately four dollars and sixty eight cents in their street maintenance assessment for fiscal twenty five. And so that these are, as I said, for street maintenance and it is projects includes for work and projects like the one that will begin tomorrow up in the soccer field area where we will begin applying the permazine treatment to the unpaved roads in that neighborhood. The first phase in a multi year process to hopefully eliminate the gravel roads in the city of Livingston. So it's projects like that and many others that are funded by this work. And so Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
No clarifying for me.
No. No. Do this every year. Um, okay, I would entertain a motion, and we can open to public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution fifty one forty one.
I have a motion by mute, throw in a second.
All second back.
Second by Willich. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. We can start in the room. If anyone would like to make a public comment in the room, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, please. Anything?
Good evening. My name is Mark Narden. I'm at ten twenty four Prairie Drive here in Livingston. And as far as the road maintenance and improvements, I walk my little dog every evening and up around by the soccer field up from Summit and everything, I gotta walk in the street. And some people are very courteous, and some people are absolutely not. And it's very concerning that here in town, we don't have the pedestrian friendly environment, regardless of the age of the individual driving the vehicle. I see it broad spectrum. And then on Summit, I don't know what is the address or plan in that regard, but after a big rain, it's always washed out. It's full of potholes, and I ride a motorcycle, and I come to a stop there, and when it's all gravelly, it's very concerning. And I just want to bring that to a to the council's attention, something to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? If you'd like to make a comment online, feel free to come off mute. I'll ask one more time. Anyone online? Feel free to come off mute. Say your name. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close. Public comment. Mister, did you have a couple of questions there? Are you able to address any of that?
I certainly am able to address several of those, you know, and I think probably I will, I'll start towards the at the end and work backwards. The Summit Street, as you know, from seventh to twelfth is the subject of a state transportation plan funded upgrade that will include not only a complete resurfacing with sidewalk curb and gutter installed as well on Summit from seventh to twelfth, but also will include some stormwater infrastructure that should address the alleyway issues and others that folks in that area observe during periods of heavy rainfall. And with regard to sidewalks, generally speaking, and and the lack of sidewalks in certain neighborhoods within the city, it is within the purview of homeowners to construct or fund the construction of sidewalks. And so if it was the desire of the commission to engage in a larger scale project, that that could be done in many ways. It could be funded by homeowners, either upfront or through an S I B of sorts in affected areas. And so it is an option that exists within our funding mechanisms.
Thank you. Could you, could you remind us of the the timeline on that funded project on Summit?
I believe we are slated to go into construction in calendar year twenty twenty eight on that one. We're very early in the planning phases there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I address anything on that?
You cannot, because we've closed public comment, but if you'd like to wait till the end, you can, we can chat, or you can talk with Mister Gager then, or you can reach out to him at any point, too. By his phone or email, he's usually pretty easy to get hold of, or even one of us, whatever. Uh, Commissioners, deliberation, discussion? Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to point out that this is the thirtieth anniversary of this on street maintenance district. And with that, a lot has been done over the years, and with this mechanism in place, we can keep can keep going forward and maintaining and improving the streets as we go along. Which is a thing that sorely needs to be done. And, you know, fortunately, you know, some of the areas in town were developed and without without regards to sidewalks and and street improvements and stuff like that. Which zoning does not allow anymore here, but that's how we're always gonna be playing catch up. And if you have no own property up there, you tend to be on the hook for it and stuff, or at least for your sidewalk, so. But we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's complaining their roads are too good. So you've got plenty of projects to do. Are you?
I would add, I think since I've been a commissioner, this is like gravel roads in town. Because even on the north side, has been something that has come up frequently, so I really appreciate the last couple of years, the focus that Mister Gager has put on going to some of our lowest quality streets in town and making it a bit more equitable for people across Livingston. So this seems like a really reasonable increase for the service that we're getting, and the improvements that have have been long. What's the word? People have been long waiting to get these improvements in their own neighborhood. So thanks to the city staff.
Okay. And I would also just thank Mister Gager for finding a process that may help with our our gravel roads, testing it, giving enough time to test that we know it's gonna work before we start putting out money to do a process that we weren't quite sure about. So thank you for do that process to find us a product that will work on those roads. That's all. Anything else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Cal.
For.
Vice Chair Nuts.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Mister Willich.
For.
Motion carries. Action item C, resolution number fifty one forty two, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to estimate the costs of maintaining lights and supplying electrical current special improvement lighting districts number, district number twenty, and the amount of sixty one thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and levying and assessing sixty one percent of the estimated cost against every parcel of property within said district for that part of the cost, which is accessible, which its accessible area bears to the accessible area of the district. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the final approval of the street, or excuse me, yes, the street light assessment for this particular district. And as as noted, the the impact of this is expected, actually the combined impact of the two light assessment districts, there is a reduction from each that will provide taxpayers a small bit of relief in fiscal twenty twenty five. And we expect that three hundred thousand dollar house that paid a total of fourteen dollars and fifty five cents in assessments last year to pay fourteen dollars and twenty cents this year. So again, a slight decrease for for homeowners there, and Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners.
I have.
Nothing else?
Yeah, I'll ask a question. Please tell. How, how are we all able to pull off a decrease? Inquiring minds.
Well. I believe, absolutely.
Excellent skills by the finance director.
So it really is a direct result of our taxable value increasing and newly taxable property within the district. So bringing in that newly taxable property and leaving that assessment at the exact same dollar value means the people that paid last year pay a little bit less this year because that's going to be passed on to the, if that makes sense, the new taxable property within the district.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, this is why students should pay attention in algebra, I guess.
I'm bad at math.
And so and then I will ask, too, we, we changed the methodology methodology last year about how we assess the properties and sort of feel like we made it a little more equitable last year in the way in which.
Right, they have to be improved properties.
Yeah. I'm so, because it felt like last.
Yeah, because Mr. He's got, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we are picking on areas that weren't developed more than areas that were, so. Thank you, and maybe spread the burden out a little bit further on everyone, so. Anything else? Any other questions? Hey, I'll entertain a motion for a resolution fifty one forty two.
I move to approve resolution fifty one forty two.
A motion by Willich, throw in a second.
I'll second.
Second by Schwartz. I will now open it up to public comment. Anyone in the room would like to make public comment? Please come up to the podium, give us your name and your address. Seeing no one in the room, we'll go online. Anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute. Give us your name. Or raise your hand. All right, one last time, public comment in the room or online? Being none. Oh. All right, I will go ahead and close public comment. Don't start saying that. I know how to say it. Don't say it now the wrong way. I'm just warning you, I've been practicing.
Okay, I have been too. I have been too, just in case.
I'm just sitting here.
Here you go. Don't skip ahead. Here's your big moment. No, no, it's not done yet. So first, we, is there any deliberation on resolution fifty one forty two? And discussion.
I'll just point out this district has been around for eighty four years.
Nice.
Approximately.
Oh, yeah.
Give or take, so.
You can apply the thirty six cent savings to the Fourth of July afternoon barbecue.
Yeah.
Equation that you do every year.
I don't know if that's how it works.
Okay, well. Since we have no, just got no further discussion, are we ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Nuts.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willich.
For.
Motion carries. Here's your moment.
I believe in you. You can do it.
All right, I know, don't mess it up.
I've been working on it for ten years.
Resolution number fifty one forty three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, of its intent to modify special improvement lighting district number twenty by replacing streets and other opulences therein, and to levy and assess a fifty eight percent of the assessed estimated cost of thirty eight thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five against every parcel of property within said district for the part of the or for the part of the cost, which is accessible, area bears to the accessible area of the district, and calling for a public hearing. Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. The item before you is the other half of street lighting in the city of Livingston. And as noted on the prior item, the combined impact of these two resolutions is a, again, a slight decrease to property owners within the in the city of Livingston and. And as Director Federhoff so eloquently stated on the last item, this really is a situation where the same tax burden is spread over a larger base and resulting in a lower individual cost. So we will stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Nothing about a pertinent system. You said that right.
I like it. Yeah, I wonder if that has to be looked up every year, if she's got it memorized now.
She doesn't have to say it, she's supposed to write it.
She can say it three times fast. And we still don't know why it's called number, district number twenty, but whatever, you know.
I was curious about that myself. Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for Resolution fifty one forty three.
I move to approve Resolution fifty one forty three.
I have a motion by Willis, so I have a second.
Well, second.
Second by Newt. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Would anyone in the room like to make a public comment? Feel free to come on up to the podium, give us your name and address. Not seeing anyone in the room, we'll go online. Anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to come off mute. Or raise your virtual hands. Don't see anyone, we'll ask one more time in the room or online. Anyone like to make public comment? Being none, I will go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, any further discussion or deliberation?
None for me.
It's a fancy way of saying thing. For accessories. I have nothing to add.
Because Livingston government's fancy, for the light fixtures.
Okay. Okay. Seeing none. I'm assuming we're ready for a vote.
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Gager, roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newt.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willis.
For.
Motion carries. All right. That leads us to city manager comments. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your help putting the budget to bed for fiscal twenty five. And I'll take just a moment, it's so early to report, that I had the opportunity to spend the day with Assistant Chief Emanuel and our Fire Chief Chavlowski with a room full of folks from the southwest Montana area in a MDT partnering meeting, where we discussed various aspects of MDT with a specific focus on the operation of Interstate ninety over the Rosemont Pass in snowstorms. And it was a good opportunity to get together with members of rural fire districts, police agencies, cities, counties, to all discuss what we could do better. Because after what happened in, in early May of this year, I think it was a kind of a wake-up call to some folks. So happy to report that those conversations are ongoing. And I'll keep the notes to that as, as things develop there. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Willis.
I don't think I have anything to add during summer, it's last night before school starts.
All right. Commissioner Schwartz.
My turn.
Your turn, I got too quick.
Um. I really don't have anything. September seventh, it's going to be the river cleanup. Coming up, we'll have a chance to re-address it more around the next meeting. You can bring it up again, but freshwater partners is the place to go on the web, find out information on it. I read it. Don't, I may just try to quote it, I'll get it wrong. But it's a manageable thing, and it's a worthwhile effort. It's amazing how much stuff comes out of there every year. And anytime I go floating, if I see something, I pick it up anyway. Long as it didn't poke a hole in my bone. Or Matt? I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Newt's.
Yeah, I would say the strange weather was already discussed in public comment, where we got almost half an inch in twenty minutes. And Livingston, not predicted, obviously. Or that amount of rain in that shorter time was not predicted. So I would say thanks to city staff for the quick response for event that everyone regrets. And Public Works keeps doing the things with other departments. I know it took more than one department, but it seems like whenever strange things happen, like pipes bursting at forty below, or things happening in the middle of the night, they show up ready to go at weird hours of the day. It's not perfect, but it's nice to see that it's more contained and it's being dealt with. So thanks to city staff for dealing with the unexpected.
Thank you so much.
Um. I got a few comments about the rodeo ground and the loud the loud speakers from there. I live in that neighborhood as well and experienced it. I did forward some information on to the county commissioners from some of the comments that we received from those folks. Just to let you all know that. And had a conversation with one of the commissioners as well, so. For me this week, amongst all the other things that were mentioned, I think two tons of trash has been pulled out of the Yellowstone in the last two years, since the, two or three years since they've been doing that. So good to see that happen and continue. Thank you for Public Works and the city for working to mitigate what happened last week. I would love to like, keep getting updates on how it's going. I think the public would appreciate that as well. So thank you for that. And that's all I have. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second. I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wow, this Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at six oh seven P M. How's it going, everyone?
It's nineteen.